Second, 2025. I hope you'll join me to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Feng.
Present.
Commissioner Linsckog.
Present.
Commissioner Scharf.
Present.
Vice Chair Kasolsharon.
Present.
Chair Rao.
Present.
All present.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for March 11th. If Commissioners can take a minute to read the minutes and then when you're ready, if one of you might propose a motion. Thank you.
For the March 11th minutes, we do have one correction. It says the meeting ended at 7:09. It actually ended at 8:09.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk.
Motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Wrong names are spelled on the screen.
Oh.
Let's do a roll call vote. Commissioner Feng.
Aye.
Commissioner Linsckog.
Abstain.
Commissioner Scharf.
Aye.
Vice Chair Kasolsharon.
Aye.
Chair Rao.
Aye.
The motion passes with Commissioner Linsckog abstaining.
Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the March 25th Planning Commission minutes. If Commissioners may take a minute to read, please.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Feng. Oh, sorry.
Aye.
Commissioner Linsckog.
Aye.
Commissioner Scharf.
Aye.
Vice Chair Kasolsharon.
Aye.
Chair Rao.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is postponements. Staff, Madam City Clerk, any postponements?
There are no postponements, Chair.
Okay, very good. All right. So the next item on the agenda is oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the Commission on any matter within the jurisdiction of the Commission and not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. In most cases, data will prohibit the Commission from making any decisions with respect to a matter not on the agenda. Madam City Clerk, do we have any oral comments?
We have one speaker card in person and no hands raised on Zoom. The first person we have is Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Let me just start out and say that I'm very glad to see that the flags are at half-mast in the city. I'm assuming that's in support of the Pope who passed away. I may be wrong, but I think that it is very nice that we show respect to other countries and our own people in this country. I am descended from both Irish that are Protestant and Catholic in the past, and I'm very, very happy, especially since Cupertino has a very strong Spanish and Mexico foundation. Thank you. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin. I've lived in this city for many years. I just wanted to bring to your attention several of the housing bills that are coming through the House of Origin at this time. The first one I want to talk about is SB 79, which is by Senator Weiner. It actually hit one of its, the first Housing Commission today in the House of Origin for the Senate. This bill is by Senator Weiner, and it is proposing to have transit areas that are one-half mile from a transit area, such as a bus stop, a ferry, train. Will be, if someone purchases property within the one-half mile, regardless of whether there's houses there, churches, schools, that builder will be allowed to build a seven-story building by right ministerially. And my understanding is, after someone told me that, that these housing complexes will be turned over to the Transit Authority, that is VTA, I'm assuming. I'm very, very scared about this because I have seen the bubble maps, which people are drawing. I saw one for Southern California. Everywhere in one of the cities, I mean, El Camino could be this way. You have a taking of land one-half mile. This is every city in the state. It is appalling that a San Francisco senator would attempt to do something like this. It is so beyond the reach of what we have elected our politicians to do. I think there are going to be repercussions for many, many years. Oregon, right now, is trying to reduce the number of bills that politicians can introduce, and I think California needs to do that. Senator Weiner has exhibited the worst overreach beyond anything. There are other people who have signed on, but I'm just very, very concerned about this. The Stevens Creek Corridor Study wants to have BRT, and this is a setup for this bill.
That is your time. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, Jennifer. Madam City Clerk, any other oral comments?
We have no speaker cards in person and no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, very good. So seeing no other consent calendar items, I think the next item on the agenda will be public hearings. And the agenda is update to vehicle parking restrictions on public roadways and restrictions on oversized vehicles, parking in residential districts, and customer-facing retail establishments. If city staff may have a report.
Sure, Chair. Tonight, we are actually very, you know, grateful that Floyd Andrews is here to present this item on behalf of the city staff. So with that, I hand it over to Floyd.
I think I'm presenting because we're the ones who wrote the ordinance. And it's coming to the Planning Commission because there were folks within the city who thought, because it has something to do with residential districts, et cetera, that it would make sense for it to come here. And I think also the council was interested in the opinion of the Commission. And so this ordinance is suggesting three updates to the parking, the municipal code with respect to parking in the city. Currently, the municipal code only allows a car or a vehicle to be parked on a public street for 72 hours, and then it needs to be moved. And currently, if you just move it, you know, a couple of feet, that satisfies. And so this updates that so that after 72 hours, the owner needs to move the vehicle 1,500 feet from where it was parked before, and it needs to stay away from where it was parked before for 24 hours before it could come back. So that ensures that vehicles aren't being parked for days and days and days in any one place. The ordinance also forbids the parking of oversized vehicles, and that's described in the statute. Oversized vehicles are generally like RVs, or trucks, or trucks with trailers. These kinds of vehicles cannot be parked in residential neighborhoods or within 100 feet of a residential neighborhood. And the same, these kinds of vehicles cannot be parked within 100 feet of customer-facing retail, which is defined in the ordinance. So that's the parameters of the ordinance that we're presenting here today.
Okay, very good. That was concise. Thank you, Anthony Andrews. Let's open it up for Commissioner questions. Anyone with questions?
Yeah, I had a quick question. So my understanding is that people are getting around this right now. So every three days, every 72 hours, they just move their vehicle a couple of feet, and then it resets the clock, right? So what would stop somebody from moving their vehicle every 48 hours? And that resets the clock? And they could just keep going like this forever?
That is a good point. I suppose if you're not there for 72 hours, then the 48 hours, they would need to move it, they probably could just move it a little ways. It's true.
So they could just move it a foot every 48 hours, and they could stay forever?
That's true. That does complicate the ordinance, and if we see that kind of issue, we can always come back and add another layer to the regulations. But I think people were really focusing on those cars that are staying in the same place for, you know, a week or two weeks at a time.
Right. So my question is, is the problem, like, do we have data that shows how much the 72-hour rule is being enforced right now? How well it's working? Like, because it's kind of odd that we're being asked to vote on something without any data, right? Any measure of how much has been enforced, how many times we've issued tickets, how many, you know, it's like, has it gone up over the last three years? Like, where are we seeing issues? Like, there's no, there's a dearth of data on, and we're being asked to vote on something with no information, really.
I definitely hear what you're saying. My understanding is the way that in residential neighborhoods, the 72-hour rule is being enforced is when somebody who lives nearby is calling the authorities to say, oh, this car has been parked here for a while. And so it really is, you know, resident-driven enforcement in the residential neighborhoods. And my assumption, it would be similar in the commercial neighborhoods.
So I guess my question is for Alves, because that seems to be the street in question. How much has the 72-hour rule been enforced? How successful has that been?
So for which road?
Alves Road. That's where there's like all the RVs parked.
By Target, I guess.
There's like a dozen RVs parked down there. I'm assuming this is a big part of why we're doing this, right?
I think it mostly has to do with the oversized vehicles. I don't want to specifically identify, you know, certain, you know, people.
But for oversized vehicles. How much has the police enforced the 72-hour rule? Like, how many tickets have they issued? How effective has that been? Like, what problem are we trying to solve? I guess is what I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, I do think the problem is to help vehicles move along. And you're saying, well, how do we know that these new updates are going to have any impact on that?
Yeah, how much have we enforced the 72-hour rule already? Because if we haven't been enforcing it, then maybe the next step is, let's enforce that rule and see how effective that is before we add on more complication, right? Because the more we add to this, the more we're adding work to our police force, right? So, which I'm happy to do if that's what's needed. But my question is, how much have we enforced the 72-hour rule right now? How effective has that been? And is it because we have tried to enforce it, and it hasn't been effective, therefore we're trying to add more rules to it?
I think the, at least the information that I was provided is, in enforcing the 72-hour rule today, we find that vehicles, wherever they're parked in the city, only move a small distance to satisfy, and then can remain where they are. And so this would, I hear you're saying that I'm not bringing you data showing that this is the case, but that's my understanding of the rationale for requiring the moving of 1,500 feet away.
But you understand my point, right? We're being asked to vote on something.
Yes.
Based on, I don't know what, somebody's opinion, somebody's impression, somebody's feelings, but no data. So it's, you know, I mean, we, what we do affects people and affects people's lives, and it's pretty serious what we do. So I would hope we take it seriously enough that we, you know, that we bring data to this body before you ask us to take a vote on something.
So if I may request Commissioners to ask clarifying questions only at this stage, and we will open it up for discussion shortly. Thank you, Commissioner. I had a clarifying question real quick. I know it's going to be really brief. I looked at the specification of the definition of oversize, and I believe it says the width is an and/or condition, and slash or. And if the width is an or, that means if the vehicle exceeds six feet, it is declared as an oversize. And I believe there are over 10 SUVs that are over six feet in width, including the Cybertruck and the Hummer and the Chevrolet and so on. So if we may clarify what the intent was at this stage, I don't want to discuss the definition, but just if you may clarify the intent.
Absolutely. You know, I looked at your suggestion, and I went back and looked at the ordinance, and the and/or is before the description of the height and width. And it actually reads and/or vehicles that are, I don't know the exact numbers, but I think it's six feet in width and seven feet in height. So the vehicle would have to be both. And when you apply both to the size of a vehicle, I think that we, that the vehicles you're describing now would be permitted.
I see. So just to ensure my understanding is right, you're saying the vehicle being both six feet in width and seven feet in height would preclude some of those wide SUVs that we're talking about?
Correct.
And I had another quick question. There are cities that have a 14-feet length limit versus 22-feet. Would you care to comment on why we chose one versus the other?
I think that we reviewed what other cities had done and chose the one that we thought that was the most rational. But there wasn't more scientific thinking than that.
Thank you, Anthony Andrews. And that's all I have. Next.
Okay. So I also went and looked at a bunch of other cities for their parking ordinances. I also saw the 14-feet instead of 22-feet, which I think I would prefer. And then the other issue was, in Saratoga, it's, you have, it's not 1,500 feet, it's a mile. So where did 1,500 feet come from? 1,500 feet is like a four-minute walk.
Well, originally, the idea had been 1,000 feet. Other cities had said 1,000 feet, I think, Mountain View. But we have some long blocks, and 1,000 feet wouldn't require that the vehicle move to another block. It would allow it to be on the same block. And so we increased it from 1,000 feet to 1,500 feet. We didn't consider a mile. I could understand why one might want to, but that would also make it more difficult for somebody in a residential neighborhood who has a car parked in front of their home, and they want to move it at 1,500 feet because they don't have a separate parking spot for it. If they had to move it a mile and walk home, that would be a big inconvenience for them.
Right. And that's the whole idea, is we're trying to get people, we're trying to use the public streets for the public, not as parking lots. And that's why I like what Saratoga did with the one mile. Okay.
Understood.
And then the other, let's see, was there one other thing? Well, when we discussed the ordinance, there were a couple of other changes that I would suggest as well, but not right now.
Any other questions from other Commissioners?
Yes, I just had a quick question. Would you consider, or did you consider signage around, you know, no large vehicle parking, just, you know, to possibly reduce the time spent citing cars and asking them to move?
So the city's dealt with the signage issue before in connection with street cleaning. And if you put up signs that say you can't park here during street cleaning times, and people keep their cars there, you can ticket the cars. But if you don't have signs, you can't ticket the cars. And the city has not made the decision to allocate the funding of putting signs all around the city so that they can ticket cars that are parked in street cleaning zones on the wrong days. And it's a similar concept. Putting up signs is quite expensive, but it is a good solution.
And I had a follow-up question. We do have residents that have camping trailers, and what is the position of the staff report on residents that have camping trailers?
I think the position is that they can't park those camping trailers in front of their house on the street for more than 72 hours, which would require that they have a driveway or another place to park those trailers. And, you know, that's sort of, some people want to have their trailer, and some people don't want to look at their neighbor's trailer. So that's really that policy issue.
So can I ask again what problem we're trying to solve here? Have we gotten a lot of complaints from residents about their neighbors parking their RVs? And, I mean, like, why are we doing the city-wide ban on oversized vehicles? And what is prompting that beyond just, you know, because we feel like it?
I think the idea was, if we're going to implement this kind of short parking period for commercial streets, we were worried that the vehicles that are currently parked extensively in commercial streets will just move to the neighborhoods, which might create a bigger problem for the neighborhoods. And so we felt we needed to have a mechanism for preventing that in the neighborhoods as well.
And to Commissioner Linsckog's question, I see we have department heads here, not to put them on the spark, but would they like to comment on code enforcement tickets on this topic, if you would care to? Thank you.
Happy to, Chair Ben Fu, Community Development Director. As we, as you may be aware, the city conducts code enforcement on complaint base due to a number of reasons, mostly due to resources. And we currently have two and a half FTE in the code enforcement team. So soon as we have a complaint, we'll go out there and cite the vehicles.
But in terms of number of complaints about these RVs by Target, have you got?
I don't have that data with me right now. We can certainly run that and provide that for you, but certainly we have more complaints in that particular area than, say, the residential areas, if you do in a comparison.
Thank you, Director Fu.
Has the number of complaints gone up?
Again, I don't remember the numbers exactly, but I recall it's been pretty consistent.
Any other questions from Commissioners? Okay. If not, we will open it up for public comment. Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments on this agenda item?
We have two speakers in person and no hands raised on Zoom. Our first speaker is Dave McEnroy, followed by Jean Bedard. Welcome, Dave.
Hello. I am a proud owner of an RV, and been doing it since I was a young man. And to give you some data, two times in the last 12 months, I've had my RV in front of my house to get ready for a trip, this time to go welcome a grandson. So I've been doing that pretty much all my adult life, and I don't want the city to take away from me the ability to go get my RV, drive it all the way from where the storage facility is, and I can't park it in front of my house with my neighbors applauding me because we all love one another. We move our cars for parties. We do all kinds of stuff. Never a complaint there from the neighborhood, at least my immediate neighbors. But I got a ticket the other day while I was getting it ready for a trip. I went to the sheriff's office, and because they're the greatest, and I'm so glad we have them, they bounced the ticket. They said, this doesn't apply. I understand the motivations. I like data. I gave you some data. Two times, I've had it there. I don't leave it there more than three days. Usually, it's one day because we have everything ready to put in it, take it back to the storage yard, when we're ready to leave, we drive the car to the storage yard, leave it there, and we take off on our trip. Also, I'd like to advise you that back in 2004, you annexed us into the county, and city officials told us at multiple town hall meetings that we would not lose any rights that we had in the county if we went into the city. And there was no time limit on that. So you'll have to take our streets out of your proposal if you're going to do it for residents' recreational vehicles. It's just unfair, and you will have a lot of people here or at the council meeting if it comes to a vote, because it'll go on next door, and everyone with an RV, and there are many of us, will be up in arms that we can't park it in front of our house, that we paid a lot of money for, to load our stuff to go see our grandchildren. So, oh, and you tried to do this in 2010, and it failed. The council refused to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jean Bedard, followed by Peggy Griffin on Zoom. Welcome, Jean.
Good evening. My name is Jean Bedard, and I am a longtime resident here. I want to echo the concerns of the previous speaker. When I looked at this, I said, wait a minute. Oversized vehicles will generally be restricted from parking on any public street within 100 feet of any residential district of the city. I'm not an RV owner, but this is overstepping. You are infringing upon property rights. You should have the right to be able to park, probably not indefinitely, but certainly in front of your house, or to have a friend come. We have people who come, there are relatives and friends who come to be caregivers. And yes, there do need to be some limits, but this is overstepping your bounds. Please take this out. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Madam City Clerk, any other comments?
We have one speaker on Zoom, Peggy Griffin.
Welcome, Peggy.
Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, Councilmembers and staff. I echo the previous two speakers. I am an RV owner, and I know other people in Cupertino who own RVs. And they either store them somewhere else, and then when it's time to go on a trip, they'll bring it and park it in front of their house while they load it. I know people who have an RV parked in their yard, and then they pull it out front to connect the tow, the car that they tow behind. And it may stay there one night when they're getting ready, because once you connect the tow, you really can't pull in your driveway. So I think this is overstepping. If we were to move our RV, we keep ours in the backyard, but occasionally tree trimmers come, and we need to move the RV. Or we're doing something in the backyard where somebody needs access, and we need to move it. Parking in front of our house, not forever, a limited time, is okay. If we had to move it to 100 feet from the edge of the residential area, I'm not sure where we would go and how we would load it. We would do many miles' travel to load up a car, to bring the stuff to the RV. This is overstepping. I understand the issue, and to address Commissioner Linsckog's question about data, there has been at least one, several RVs in our area that liked to park on Lucille, and they would bounce from Lucille to Merritt, to Lucille, to Merritt, to Pear Tree, to Merritt. And neighbors would have to call. This was on a school route. They would call and complain, and a sticker would be put on the vehicle, and that would sit, and the vehicle wouldn't move, and then another sticker would be put in, and another sticker, and eventually the pile would get high enough that the vehicle would eventually move. But it wasn't three days. It was weeks before the vehicle moved. And then it would go to the next spot, and it would get a green sticker, an orange sticker, a yellow sticker, and eventually it would move again. So the enforcement isn't very good, even when people complain. So that needs to be fixed. But this is overreaching. People should be allowed to park a limited time in front of their house to load and unload or to visit. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy.
Thank you, Peggy. We have no hands raised on Zoom and no speaker cards.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. We will close the public comment on this agenda item and open up Commissioner comments for discussions, if you will, or if you have questions, follow-up questions for staff. Maybe we do some follow-up questions for staff first? Anyone with follow-up questions for staff? I do have a follow-up question. So I'm wondering if staff considered how the other cities are dealing with the topic of residents that own RVs and camping trailers and accommodating their needs while balancing the concerns of long-term oversized vehicles being left in neighborhoods?
We looked at Mountain View, and they don't have that in their statute. They just have the 72-hour limitation. And then we looked at Fremont. They do have that restriction. And I am not sure if they've been having issues with their residential neighborhoods or not.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. If no other questions, we can open it up for discussion.
So I appreciate, you know, the speaker who has their RV stored somewhere else and then brings it to their house. I mean, that's, that's a good thing to not store it on the street permanently, which, you know, is not allowed anyway. So I'm wondering if we can put something in this ordinance that says to accommodate homeowners with recreational vehicles, homeowners can park in front of their house for up to a certain time, 48 hours, maybe. I haven't thought about the number of hours, just to accommodate them, but without allowing them to park long-term on the street. And this would be for residential neighborhoods. I also appreciate, I didn't think of the fact that... I also appreciate, I didn't think of the fact that the areas that were annexed into Cupertino, we would have to look into what, what transpired at the time in terms of, you know, promises that were made that you could still use the public streets to store your vehicles indefinitely. But yeah, that's one thing for the RVs. Yeah, I mean, we have to address the issue, but we need to be cognizant of people that have a legitimate need to have their RV in front of their house for a certain amount of time. And I do appreciate Peggy Griffin.
Sorry, public comments have been closed, so appreciate your input. Thank you.
Okay, well, yeah.
Commissioner Schorf, did you have thoughts?
No, no, no. Actually, I would ask the resident to come up, and I will let him say what it was about the 72 hours with the county.
72 hours is really fair. You know, I don't want an RV parked in front of my place, next door or down the street for seven, eight days. 72 hours is very reasonable. And certainly I can get things loaded up in 72 hours.
All right, yeah, appreciate that. Yeah, so maybe instead of 48, it's 72. Yeah, we just need to find some way to get these, you know, oversized vehicles that are permanently parked on the public streets. And they really are a nuisance. I mean, when I leave Target or Marina Foods back on Alves Drive, you can't even see the traffic coming down the street because of these huge vehicles that are parked, you know, right up to where the exit of the parking lot is. You know, it's dangerous, and, yeah, we really need some ordinance, but one that takes into account, you know, what those three residents mentioned.
Excuse me. The public comments have been closed, so I request the members of the public to please hold your-
Okay, go ahead.
Quick clarification. The version I have has 72 hours. It does not say 48.
No, no, but this was, if it's an oversized vehicle, I believe it's not even 72 hours. Is that correct, Floyd?
In the residential neighborhoods?
Unconditional.
I think you can still leave it there for 72 hours.
Even if it's oversized?
Right now, the code is 72 hours everywhere, right? As far as I understand?
I don't think so. I think what you're-
I think the, it's not 72 hours for oversized vehicles in residential neighborhoods, although you can also be loading and unloading an oversized vehicle in a residential neighborhood. But it isn't 72 hours for the vehicle.
It is not 72 hours, or it is?
In residential neighborhoods? I don't think it is. But you know, I'm just gonna take a quick peek at the, at the ordinance real quick.
Okay.
So my thoughts on this is that we haven't done enough research and due diligence on this. We are not ready to vote on this. I don't disagree that we need to solve the problem on Alves. I think we all agree that there is a problem there that needs to get resolved. But as I pointed out a few minutes ago, if the oversized vehicle drivers there just move their oversized vehicles every 24 hours, one foot forward, that's perfectly illegal, and they'll keep, you know, they'll just keep doing that. So we're not solving the problem with the solution that we are offering today. And we're not actually sure what problem we're solving today, because we don't know what we have tried to implement. We don't know what's worked, what hasn't worked. We don't have any of that information. So, and, and we have issues like, you know, we have grandfathered areas in our city that we haven't considered. This is half-baked, and it is not ready for us to vote on. So I would suggest we go back, get the data, get the, you know, think through this a little bit more, and come back with a more thought-through recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner Linska, for what it's worth, my own personal anecdotal sort of observation of this. I've heard from residents a number of complaints about the issues around the Target area specifically. I have heard them talk about complaints that have been filed with 311. Unfortunately, 311 tickets do get closed before resolution is noted in the ticket, and there is no way for residents to get information on whether there was resolution. Just observing the area, it doesn't seem like it has changed the situation. And I know there have been residents that have been writing in to the council, and I don't believe that that has changed the situation currently, so.
And I point out, it's not just Alves.
That's my, that's my observation.
I drove around that area earlier this week. It's not just Alves. It's expanded to Bandly Drive now, and, you know, and I would point out that I believe in 2019, the city council was considering this oversized vehicle ordinance, and then we decided, well, you know, with COVID and all, we're going to put this on hold. So it's not like this just came out of thin air all of a sudden. This has been brewing for many, many years. And I don't think this ordinance is half-baked. I would make maybe a couple of changes to address the issue of, oh, you know, what happened if someone moves two feet every 48 hours, and instead of 72 hours, you know, we can, you know, tweak it to fix, to fix that, you know, and bring it back before it's voted on. And I think, yeah, we're just discussing it any, you know, this is just a, this item on the agenda is just a public hearing, and it's just whatever we recommend to the city council, and it can be modified in the meantime to address any, anything in there that, you know, needs to be addressed.
I would also add that there have been other neighboring cities that have taken action on RVs. I know the San Jose Spotlight just had an article on the city of San Jose enforcing RV encampment cleanup from Alviso, Alviso-Milpitas area, and that traffic certainly will have to shift somewhere else. And so I believe the, the city needs to probably be cognizant of the surrounding cities taking action on this, and whether that leads to new RV occupants coming into our city. And so that's, that's just something to keep in mind as well as a factor. But I do agree with Commissioner Linska that we need to, we need to factor in all of the conditions here that we are encountering, particularly public input around residents. I think we need to make sure it's fair for residents, and as long as we might find a suitable compromise that perhaps allows for residents and their guests, and accommodates them, then maybe there's ways we can strike a balance. Would Commissioners like to suggest any amendments?
Well, respectfully, what do you want?
I was, I haven't commented yet. I'd like to-
I'd like to, I'd like to yield to Commissioner Fung, because he hasn't said anything yet.
Yeah. So, so I'm disappointed at the side. I think that the staff report is deficient compared to what we normally have. At a minimum, you'd expect that we would get a report of the number of complaints. I think that the issue has been raised here, is this solving a problem, or is this just somebody wants to do this? It should be easy to answer that. And if the answer is, you know, that there are not, there's not a history of complaints, there's not a history of increases in complaints, then, you know, I don't think we should take an action. So, so I think that that's, that's one area. And then the other area that I'm concerned about is, again, what we would normally expect for a report like this, and it's not, it's not for us, it's for the benefit of the, the community as well, to have a reporting of the, what communities around us typically do, of the current, the current state of that situation. And I think that there are two separate, two separate things here. I find that the, you know, that the changes, the changes to cars, regular cars, and moving them, you know, it really is just a change of how far do you have to move it, right? And if, if we feel strongly that there, there needs to be a number, that this is really, so first of all, please, let's make sure that this is really a problem. And second of all, is this really addressing the problem? But, but I was much more concerned that with the RV, with the large vehicle portion of this recommendation, that, that there was no mechanism for somebody to legally bring, you know, a vehicle, you know, a large vehicle into the neighborhoods. And that just seems, it seems pretty outlandish. You know, there are, there are certainly the cases of people who aren't, aren't RV owner, and they just want to load. There are people who are getting a visit from somebody who happens to travel in an RV. These are all, these are all reasonable things, and I think that they were demonstrating no accommodation of that whatsoever in this, in this plan. So I think, I think that's a problem. Related to this, there's clearly also an issue, you know, the, the issue of the expansion, if there are large vehicles parked on Bandly, you know, it's not a residential street. So I understood that, that there may be an action that's required in the residential districts, that it's kind of, you know, combined with this. But I would just say, you know, I think it was just kind of disappointing to see this recommendation. You know, there are, there are, there may not be good reasons why somebody decides to park their, park their vehicle, you know, park an RV and, and live it, live in it on a residential street. I mean, this is a, this is a challenge. I mean, again, this would have come up in, had we, had we had a review of adjoining neighborhoods. This was a big problem in Mountain View. I mean, it was a huge problem in Mountain View. Enough, enough that, you know, the mayor, you know, didn't even get re-elected onto the council because he was an advocate for, for this. So, you know, I think that it's possible to recommend, recognize that there's an issue. What we want to be careful about is overreacting, overreacting. And I think, I don't know, it's, we, we live in times when people are needlessly cruel, and I'm disappointed to see that this feels like that to me. I wouldn't vote for it. I wouldn't support this. And we don't have to take a vote today. I would certainly, my recommendation would be, you know, if we're going to take action, let's do that for something that's really, really in action. And I would actually, I actually want to, want to comment, you know, the thing about ticketing cars for street sweeping came up. I happen to, I've been living in the same home in Cupertino here for 39 years now. And one of the things that's really interesting is my house happens to be in an area that used to be an elementary school, used to be Hoover School. So I kind of understand why there was a street sweeping area by the school, but the school was gone long before, you know, 40 years ago. So it's kind of funny that we have, you know, we have street sweeping today. You know, I can still get, I can still manage to get an $85 ticket if I leave my car on the street the wrong day for no apparent reason. So, you know, I just, I would think that, I don't think it's any massive improvement. You know, maybe every place should just have street sweeping, and, and that would make, make that more effective. But at the same time, I think we, we just need to have good reasons for the things, the actions we take. And I think that that's our responsibility to, you know, to give that guidance.
Thank you, Commissioner Fung. I think those comments are, are certainly valid and very, very timely, I think. The question I would have, I guess, is maybe to staff, the purpose of this agenda item is to recommend Planning Commission's feedback to council, and it is council's job to hear the first ordinance and take action as they so choose. And so perhaps this is not the perfect draft that it ought to have been, but that is why it is here, to get the public input and to get input from us Commissioners. And so I'd like to ask at me, Andrews, if, if, if that's a reasonable interpretation of how and why this came about to Planning Commission?
I think that's accurate.
And, and would it be fair then to say the minutes in the meeting would reflect the notes in terms of feedback that the Commissioners have, and that would be factored into your draft that would then be taken to council for the first reading of the ordinance?
Absolutely.
So, so first of all, as I understand it from Floyd, a person, a resident can have their RV in front of their house for 72 hours. Is that accurate?
That's not the way the ordinance is currently written.
So, so how long could they have it now? Zero, or?
They can have it there for a loading and unloading.
Loading and unloading only. Okay, so yeah, that would be one change then, is to have a reasonable amount of time that, you know, because people do go to where it's parked and bring it there, and then get ready for their trip. And the other thing is sometimes people have, you know, a resident will have a visitor come in an RV, and I would like to see some kind of permit program where, you know, a visitor to, someone that lives in Cupertino could get a permit to park on the street for a certain number of days, say three days or five days, and that, you know, the resident would be entitled to get one of those permits every few months, or, it's almost like those, we have a rule about how, how long you can have one of those debris boxes in front of your house. And that's in your driveway. And I, I can't remember, but you can only have it a certain number of days every certain number of months. So I think we can craft this in a way that we achieve the desired result in terms of people parking their RVs on the street for months at a time versus somebody just loading up for a trip or having, having a visitor. And yeah, like other cities, you know, I went and looked at all these other cities that are doing something similar. And yes, they are trying to solve the problem of, you know, it's often not, the RVs that are parked on the street are oftenly not even owned by the person in it. People have bought old RVs, parked them on the street, and essentially created an apartment complex on the public street, where the public street really should be used for bike lanes and car lanes, whatever. It's not intended to be, turn the public street into an apartment building. So I hope, yeah, I hope this can be modified and brought back, either directly to council or back to us. There were a couple of other things I had wanted to suggest, something in the ordinance that the oversized vehicles cannot intrude into traffic lanes or bike lanes. And, and it was also the thing about the distance. I like Saratoga's requirement of one mile instead of 1,500 feet.
And Commissioner Schorf, while you're gathering your thoughts, if I may quickly add, I think staff have provided another available option to Commissioners, which is allowing the parking for up to 72 hours, but requires the movement for at least 1,500 feet. And so perhaps there's a combination of allowing the 72-hour parking, but then requiring the vehicle be moved one mile. That provides a sufficient inconvenience that would hopefully not be an issue for residents, but addresses the issue that we are looking to solve.
Right. And there was also Commissioner Linska's, you know, it's, it's a valid point. Someone that's a stickler could say, okay, every 48 hours, I'm going to move it, and now I'm within the law because I didn't move it because it wasn't 72 hours. So I appreciate Commissioner Linska bringing that up, and, you know, and the city attorney could figure out the appropriate verbiage for, to address that issue as well.
And so for the purpose of, and I know we've been going for a while, and we should have a motion on the table, so just for the purpose of extending the discussion, I'd like to offer a motion to move the staff proposal or the staff ordinance with the amendment that we recommend a 72-hour limit, and the vehicle be moved at least one mile.
Yeah.
Just for the purpose of the discussion. I don't-
Right, right. Yeah, yeah, I'll second that. And, yeah, that's, that's the rules of order really requires that we have a motion to do the discussion.
Is the motion clear to staff?
Can you clarify what you, what the motion is? So are you saying anywhere residential, so right now, the proposal is to ban oversized vehicles in residential areas completely, no 72 hours. So are you proposing to allow them to be there for 72 hours in residential areas?
I'm proposing the other available option in the staff report, which says that we would update the 72 hour, the 72-hour parking restriction, but enforce that the vehicle move at least one mile instead of 1,500 feet.
So add, so keep the 72-hour limit that we have right now in the municipal code, which applies to all streets in the city?
Yep.
And then add the one-mile move, and not do the second part of the, the ordinance, which, the proposed ordinance, which is the banning oversized vehicles in residential areas?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And again, that's a motion for the purpose of discussion, so I'll come comments.
That doesn't fix, you know, the, you, you identified a hole in that problem. So I, I don't, you know, I, I'm sorry, I wouldn't support any of these. I guess, you know, I feel like on, on top of that, there's, there's a message we're trying to, I think that we're trying to send a message here, which is, hey, don't park on the street here, even if there's nobody there. If we were as a city more supportive of, of bicycling and, and the other uses, you know, the street that we're, we're saying we don't want these cars there for, I think it would be great. I, you know, I think we're, we have demonstrated some problems in that as well. So, I mean, I mean, I'm a no vote on that, but, you know, I appreciate, I appreciate at least, at least bringing it, I guess. I'm not sure that we're actually intending to vote on this. I mean, that's, you know, that we needed to have a motion here going forward.
So as I, as I understand, the chair's motion is actually to recommend to the city council a different recommendation from the staff recommended action. And what the chair is recommending is to have the 72 hours as it is, but amend it to, to move it for a minimum of 24 hours, at least a mile distance. That's the recommendation.
And, and to clarify, it's a motion on the table to keep our discussion going along. So, I have not heard from the vice chair, so I'd like to see if the vice chair has any comments to offer.
Um, yeah, I think I would, uh, agree with the need for more data. I think if we can have an inventory of where existing RVs are, um, as well as, you know, I think what, um, Ben mentioned around, uh, gathering all of the complaints that have happened to date and where they are happening, um, then maybe it would help, um, understand which zones or areas, um, are, are getting more complaints and, and we could make a somewhat more informed decision in a way that, um, doesn't unfairly penalize residents. Um, I, anecdotally, I think that most of the complaints are happening more around commercial areas. I may be wrong about that, but, um, there may be something around zoning and signage that can be done that, you know, can avert the problem of having to cite a vehicle and, you know, forcibly remove them, um, just through clearer communication. So, I'd be interested in that.
And, and just to clarify your comments, vice chair, are you recommending that in the form of feedback that you would like to send to council so that the item does not get delayed in going to council and being heard at council versus-
Yes, yes.
Bringing it back to the planning commission and then perhaps a delay in when it reaches council?
This is just additional feedback to add along with what is being passed along.
Thank you, vice chair. So, if I understand your comment, you would be supportive of, of furthering the staff report with feedback from planning commission to council for the first hearing?
Yes, since this is a first reading, I am supportive of, um, moving that first reading along.
Okay. Any other discussion from commissioners?
Um, okay, I'm a little confused about what the vice chair said because it sounded like she wanted them to come back with more data, but then she said, no, she doesn't. So, I'm, she wants to move the ordinance forward.
Uh, well, this is a first reading, so I think when it goes to council, what my hope was that there could be additional information presented for a more informed decision.
So, we should make an uninformed decision so that the council can make an informed decision? Is that what we're saying?
I, I would interpret that as feedback that we would pass along to council. I believe the purpose of the review here was to gather feedback from the planning commission and whether we would recommend moving this forward or not, so.
So, I, I actually like what the vice chair suggested about maybe there are other solutions we should be looking at, like signage. Um, and again, it, it points out the inadequacy of the report that we were given, uh, where we were not talked, you know, we don't know where the areas are, the issues are, we don't know what solutions have been considered or not, or other cities have looked at that have worked, that haven't worked. Um, it's a very, very incomplete report and I, for one, I can't vote to move this ordinance forward based on such little data because we are setting a very bad precedent as a planning commission if we vote on things without sufficient information.
Thank you, Commissioner Linsckog. Appreciate the input. Any other commissioners have any other feedback? Otherwise, we should be, um, making a recommendation here, so I'm interested in any other final comments.
I, I think it was just, just as a point, this is not the first reading. This is whether or not they should have a first reading in the council.
Would, would any commissioners be interested in amending the motion or offering, um, a substitute motion if not?
So, I don't know if I'm offering a substitute motion, but I, I actually wouldn't, wouldn't advance this to the council until it comes back with a sufficient, um, report and, you know, some, I, I think it probably, this probably needs to be unified with the commercial, parking regulation changes. It sounds like that might be in process, maybe, maybe I misunderstood that, but, um, let's get it all in one. You know, I think the problem is you can, there's no amount of discussion on this that fixes, if you, if people are concerned that there are people parking on Bandle. I mean, it's-
Yeah, sorry, and I'll just add one more thing, right? So, Stephen, uh, Commissioner Scharf, right, mentioned the twenty-four hour thing, right? But that's just one example. He could do twenty-four hours, I could do eighteen hours. I mean, it, if, if somebody wants to get around this rule, there, there's many, many ways to get around that. And, and rather than us sitting here trying to amend it, which I don't know that we can do it very quickly, this is something that needs to be thought through a little bit. So, again, I don't disagree, there's an issue. I'm a hundred percent agree that we need to solve the issue. This is rushed and incomplete and we need to think through this a little bit more.
Could I ask our staff when this is proposed to go to the council for agenda? What, what date is this proposed to go to council?
Uh, it's set tentatively for, uh, May twenty-second, but, um, it's not, um, it doesn't, it's not required to go back to the council at that time.
Okay, very good, excellent. So, I'd like to see if there is interest in continuing this item to the next meeting, which is bef, well before May twenty-second, giving us a chance to hear a refined report that factors in the feedback that planning commission has shared. And hopefully, that still gives staff enough time to take the item to council. Would that work for staff?
Um, it, it may be rushed, I will admit, um, because staff is focusing on, uh, bringing many things forward at the city council level at this time. Um, but we can do what we can. We can try.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it's a big deal if it's delayed another month, right? I mean, this is an issue that needs to be addressed thoughtfully and look at all the other cities and see how they're dealing with it. Um, yeah, I know Mountain View has been dealing with it and many other cities, you know, are dealing with this issue that-
Okay.
Uh, we need to do it thoughtfully.
Okay, very good.
So, while we're making recommendations, let me, let me say that, uh, you know, that there's a problem here where as this, as this current resolution is formed, I think it will be impossible to resolve the issue of, you know, that the person wait twenty-four hours or twenty-three hours or forty-seven hours and move their car foot. In this modern age, it's not very hard to take the geoposition of, of a vehicle. Uh, so perhaps the way that you need to do this would be to consider something like when the vehicle is sighted, you record the position and then, and then, you know, they would be, you know, they would need to move beyond a certain amount to do that. That, that is possible to do. It would be so expensive that I think nobody would do it.
No, Palo Alto does that already. They, you have to move within, you know, outside a certain area.
Yes, within, within the zone, within a couple.
Right, so.
So, I would just say, you know, there-
Or the signage, like, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, there's potentially other solutions that we're not looking at.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah. So, so I would just say, you know, there were a number of things that, that we discussed here that, that would go into making for, I think, a better, a better proposal.
I, I wanna see if we can be a little bit more defined in our guidance to staff. I, I think we do wanna see this come back, but before we do that, I wanna test for whether we wanna go one direction or the other. I think in the interest of time, we talked about doing this as a seventy-two hour thing, but there was an alternative that was put on the table, which was a permit for residents. And I know we have various city locations where permits are issued and I'm curious what commissioners think about using a permit mechanism that hopefully is, is the least hassle for residents, but at least identifies us.
I think if it's seventy-two hours, um, you know, people complain, when, when they see a car parked for many days, they complain. And then the sheriff comes out a few days later and puts a tag on it. And then three days later, they come back and ticket it if it's still there. So, it's really, you know, at least six days, you know, maybe nine days. So, I think even the seventy-two hours allows if someone, you know, and, and I once had somebody drive out from Florida and they parked their RV in front of my house for three days and I told them park in the driveway and they said, no, it's not level, I wanna park in the street. And, you know, I said, yeah, okay, and it was no problem. Um, so, it doesn't have to be a permit, it, you know, we can figure out, you know, if that's even necessary. We don't need to overdo it. You know, I know the issue we're trying to address is oversized vehicles parked in one place for months at a time. And we have to find a way to, to address that.
Okay.
Thoughtfully.
And, and so, I would like to withdraw my motion. Do we need a motion to continue the item?
I, I can make that motion.
Okay, I'll second it.
And, and so, before we vote, I just wanna clarify, I think the feedback, if I read the room here, is that we'd like to be, uh, supportive of residents that own RVs and camping trailers, if there's ways that we can identify them, including their guests, uh, while, uh, making sure that we do not have vehicles that permanently park in the city, uh, as far as oversized vehicles. So, staff may be able to look at accommodating both those inputs. And if we can bring this back to planning commission, which I believe is May, our, our next meeting hopefully, but we will leave it to staff on what timelines you can accommodate.
Thank you very much, that's all doable.
Okay, and so, we have a motion to continue and a second, let's vote. Are we still doing the voice vote, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, we will do a roll call vote. Commissioner Fung?
Aye.
Commissioner Linsckog?
Aye.
Commissioner Scharf?
Aye.
Vice Chair Casulcheron?
Aye.
Chair Rao?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
And I'd like to thank the commissioners for a spirited discussion and also working in unanimity towards something that we can hopefully deliver a better product to council. So, I'd like to suggest we take a quick break because the next item might run a little long. So, we'll take a five-minute break and then we will resume on the next item.
Okay.
And so, the, the hearing on this item is closed.